Down to speak up.
Yes.
All right, I am going to call the special workshop six thirty to seven to order so that we can discuss millage rate budget and approve our final budget hearing date. And we've already been through this budget, so my assumption is that it's not going to be a long drawn out discussion.
Correct. At least here.
All right.
Here, it's a long drawn out discussion.
Oh, it's gonna be long tonight.
Yeah, it is.
So we are trying out some new templates for presentations, so you'll see, I've got one that Alicia sent me that I I work with, like, just got a different one. We're working on getting a cohesive template, but trying some out. Just, uh, your. So this, uh, tonight is one of the required public hearings that we have to do as part of the state statutes, the group and village process. So this public hearing is to present to the town commission and residents proposed millage rates, the rollback mill rate, a tentative budget for FY twenty twenty three. So the order tonight, and what happens is we're just essentially approving the tentative budget tonight. This public hearing was advertised as part of the trim notices that went out the third week in August in property praiser. That is the requirement for this public hearing. We will have a advertisement, actually two advertisements in the paper for the next public hearing on the twenty seventh. So the order of this is the presentation of the millage, then we open it up for public comment. Then you approve the millage and then, um, and all the actions that we have here is to prove the, uh, the military, prove the tentative budget and then, approve the public hearing for the final thought. I always put that in there just as another way to let people know that we're having a. So the first thing I want to bring to your attention is what the town has done, the commission has done for the last five years. Uh, the military was for a number of years at six point seven five. Uh, and FY twenty nineteen, the military was lowered to six point six five, FY twenty twenty was six point five. It stayed at six point five for two years because there was some uncertainty with COVID and how things might happen after COVID. Was that short, very short reception that we had, but it was very disruptive on an economic side of things. Uh, and then for FY twenty twenty two, for the current year budget, it's six point four. And then what's been approved in July and what's the end today is six point three. Um, and I do talk about we've done four out of the last five years and I would, um, recommend to the commission that moving forward, you look real hard at, at beefing up reserves versus trying to continue to lower the mileage. I mean, you can look at it on a case by case basis if some of the commercial happened on Highway fifty, but I would really put a concentration on on our reserves. For. So, uh, just to go through this and and what what happens here is this is by approval. When we get to the final public hearing, you will be doing that by resolution. So I will actually have resolution numbers. Um, but what I am going to do is go through the the mill rate. Um, so the FY twenty twenty two mill rate is six point four for the town of Oakland. Uh, the what was approved and what went out on the trim notices in July or what was approved in July and went out in the trim notices in August was six point three. The recommended millage tonight again is six point three. The calculated rollback rate that you have to do as part of the state statutes is five point five nine two seven. Again, that rollback rate is, uh, what it would take for existing properties. You have the same, to bring in the same revenues as you did for the current year on existing properties and not on new construction. Um, so if you're above the rollback rate, it's considered a tax increase and that's what has to be advertised in the paper for the July twenty seventh. Um, but the recommended rate, um, as a percent change of the rollback rate is twelve point six five percent. So again, uh, part of this process is for the public comment and, um, I'm gonna read just one section out of the the resolution real quick, which you'll hear next. Well, great, it's to be allowed to exceed the rollback rate of five point five nine two seven, which is twelve point six five percent. Add that on a graph. Um, I'll put aside and we open it up for public comment.
I'll do this part first.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so do we have any questions or comments at the table? All right, do I have a motion?
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, sure.
There's a, um, communication person, she's gonna put this out, spell it out for for the people.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, I just wanted to make sure we just tickle this.
Oh, yeah. Well, and you know, I really would, and I know that, um, because everybody else is going through their, um, budget hearings, that we don't have completely accurate information yet for at least West Orange County.
Yeah.
Including Orlando and Orange County. I would love to be able to talk about where we fall because we're we're actually moving down. I think, I don't know if a couple areas moved up, but we're way far away from, um, Orlando now if they stay where they are. I don't see them being able to go down with all the projects that they have, but I could be wrong. Um, and I would also love to figure out a way without like pointing fingers. Steve knows exactly what I'm gonna say. Um, to talk about the fact that all these millage rates are not apples to apples because we are not allowed by Orange County to separate our fire from the other millage. So our millage really, when you take fire out, which is like Okoye, right, Jack?
They have a fire.
Yeah, but they take that fee out of their millage, which is what we would like to do with Orange County. Um, I would assume Apopka does the same thing because they spend a ton of money on their fire. Um, so anyway, it's not apples to apples.
Right.
Uh, really, if you took our fire out, we'd be sitting at point something.
How much is the fire?
It's two point.
Yeah, it's it's about two point, two point two mills is what the unincorporated residents in Orange County pay.
Yeah.
And that's the same rate that they apply to the town through our internal agreement.
Hmm.
You get a, 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 a small discount on that for paying, we make the payment in two payments. Um, so we do have a discount on that, that two point two mills, but that's what it's calculated.
So if people look at our military and they're like, well, it's six point three. And, you know, Okoye is four point, they went down again this year. Four point nine five? Yeah, but that we would be probably in that ballpark.
We took out the fire.
We took out the fire.
Something.
What's it like to say that our fire is a higher percentage of our whole budget compared to like a Coey?
No. No, it's just separated out so people think their ad valorem's are four point whatever, nine, three, nine, five.
It all, it all has to be funded in some way, but what happens in some jurisdictions is they have a fire assessment. And it's, it's not property tax based like this, it's based on number of buildings or other criteria. So they'll have a fire assessment that pays for their fire fees, so their mileage might be four point better, but they're paying for their fire on a, on a, on an assessment. And so, um, with us, if you try to compare four point nine to six point three and we're not doing an assessment, our fire is embedded in that six point three. So it's about a third of the millage for the town is going to fire protection services. We we get the advantage of not having to run our own fire service, which can be very expensive and will probably cost a lot more than what we're paying, um, but.
Yes, it would, without a doubt.
Yeah. Um, but Orange County won't separate that millage and show it separately as a fire millage compared to the town village. We have to, we have to pay them and they don't collect it through the the property or tax collector. So, um, that's some of the nuances there, but.
And we're reminding and convey this to our citizens to say, hey, we're actually four point two, four point three.
Uh, absolutely.
A reminder.
I don't have a whole lot of people that are are actually been complaining about the millage, but absolutely I would have that discussion with people that should that question come up.
Yeah, but I think we should be able to tell.
I totally should tell, yeah.
Put it in the graph.
Yeah.
Seen it in places where they, they put in a pie chart and you can see this goes to transportation, this goes to police and fire and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we can put it in the graph, this sort of optically see it and.
People don't, I mean, it's hard to understand, it's confusing, you have to simplify it and you have to help people understand that all ad valorem's are not apples to apples. Because I don't know what Orlando does, but they they were at six point seven five the last we looked. I, six point six five, I would assume their fire might be in there, but I don't know for sure. Um, but I just would love for people, you know, to understand.
Yes.
And they don't, you know, it is clearly in the era that we live in that they don't want to understand, they just want to assume. And I would love to be able to at least say, look, we're telling the story.
Do you know what's missing, Mayor?
But.
The hard work that staff does in order projecting it's, you know, all this projection. You know, you're dealing with just housing avalorms to run our town, but just how that's done. I mean, they're doing a hell of a job to to keep us steady and at the same time, you know, um, and 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 to lower. So what's been done over the last five years, I mean, that's.
And the other part of it, I'm, do you have more to say?
Well, I was, I'm just saying, we need to let people know what the staff is doing, they're not just sitting there just.
Oh, no, well, everybody thinks this is Mayberry and, yeah, this is Mayberry and just call Sarah up. But the thing that, you know, we've been talking about, like your, the comment you're making, Joseph, over the years is we have been very careful not to overstaff because we knew that we would come off of, you know, a peak period of, um, you know, growth and we didn't want to have too many people and not enough work, we're very, very conscious of that. And so, you know, yeah, and I mean, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm just extrapolating here and we might not be there yet because we're in a period of, um, we've experienced this growth, we've held on, we've kept taking care of it, we've done a great job. But there are other things that we need to pay attention to coming off this growth that you, you know, you just didn't have time to deal with otherwise. So now it's the devil's in the details and and doing some things that we know are needed to be done, but we just haven't had time to focus on them. But I think that, you know, like, I would love to showcase to you guys, you know, the department has, you know, what this is what so and so does or the department as a whole, you know, put a little picture out there and put it on Facebook, put it on the website.
Yeah, I, I, we definitely have some opportunities.
Yeah, so that's the kind of thing where, you know, we're going, you know, I'm sure staff is going, oh, great. But that's the kind of thing that we're gonna end up have, maybe having a little bit of time to focus on.
It's all that work behind the scenes.
Yep.
I mean, it's a lot of work. Our monthly letters, we always showcased what's happening. We never showcase what's behind the scenes, all that extra work, that, you know, hard work that they're doing. So maybe a little once a month, say, this department is doing this, Mike Parker again strikes again.
Yeah.
And things like that.
But then they, you look into the.
So to speak.
So these, um, this was going out in her team. To the six point three, right?
And I was, I was actually surprised, um, uh, that it's not widely known that we reorganized, that we have an assistant town manager, it's just not widely known. And so people are gonna, I guarantee it, um, and my husband would be guilty of it if I weren't married to him. Um, is they're gonna assume, oh, they're spending more money. Oh, look at them, they're spending, what do you need an assistant town manager for, what do we? I mean, I can say my friends have done it to me. What do you mean you need more office space? You should have plenty of office space.
They've done it to me on every position, your little town needs assistance, needs a.
No.
Yeah.
Small little town doesn't need but three workers there.
Yep, now, you know, why they think they only need three workers is because that's what, um, Edgewood does. The only thing they really pay for is their, their, uh, clerk and their police department. Their budget is like, poor John, I already gave him a hard time, their budget's like five million dollars total. And they're the same sizes.
That's a perception they get of us when they come by. Not a perception, you let them know, perception is all politicians and all cities and towns just want money, that's what the perception is. And, you know.
And we waste it.
Yeah.
You know, we're over here paying ourselves fifty bucks a month.
Forty nine in December.
And forty nine in December.
Thank you, Bill, that is.
Yeah. Well, there was a reason for it at the time.
Well, they tell a story.
Yeah, I agree, wholeheartedly, Alicia will be so thrilled to hear this. All right, so I got a motion, right? Do I have a second? Okay, I need a motion, please.
How do we make the motion? You got three items here.
We're just on the one. Just the one.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the tentative millage rate for fiscal fiscal year two thousand twenty two, twenty three.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, I am going to ask if the the public has anything to say. I don't know if I have any public here, I have one person I don't quite recognize. You're from CPH, right?
She could, she could change hats.
Yeah, do you have anything to say, Mr. CPH? All right, I'll bring it back to the table, we've asked for public comment, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right, so got the, yes, approval of the tentative mill rate of six point three. I'm just gonna go through real quick what we, and this is what you saw back in July, we haven't made a whole lot of changes to the budget. We have a total general fund budget of ten million, five hundred thirty seven thousand, and yeah, I'm gonna go through our four distinct budgets. And that's one of the things that that makes us unique to some of the other small cities and towns is we have school budget and we have a utility budget. Um, not every town has a utilities, not every town, uh, most of them don't have schools.
Yeah.
Um, so that, those are two things that make us very unique here. Um, property values did increase by forty one and a half percent of the budget is based on the military to six point three. The estimate of reserves around sign fund balance is one point five million. Um, and you saw with the, um, the audit that we had that for last year for twenty twenty one, I was at one point two, we're still ticking that that fund balance up a little bit at a time for for the current year and and then the next year. Uh, there were some updated state revenue sharing information, um, from the Department of Revenue. And so we did update some of the revenues that we do get through the state. Um, those came down, they were a little more conservative, um, kind of looking at that possible recession possibly, I'm, I'm assuming that the state's looking at. So, um, but we're still in a pretty strong, uh, place here within the town. So even those revenues being a little flatter than what we had anticipated in July, um, we're still in a good place, we're still have a balanced budget.
So I have two thoughts, um, and then we'll go around the table. Um, does this include the three hundred thousand that we were notified about?
No, it does not.
Okay, that's common though.
Yeah.
We got three hundred thousand from the state?
Can bring that up when we, when we're talking about the utility.
You got it, okay, and, um, this is just, this is a thought and it goes along with, you know, showcasing what we do in this town is I feel like, um, you know, at one point, and I don't know if it's still true, we had some of the highest property values in Orange County. Um, I think the work that we have done, and I will let everybody to make their own conclusion, has this place will have cachet twenty, thirty, forty years from now. It'll be like a winter park, um, only better traffic. Um, and or a, or a Windermere, you know, but or a, or a Winter Garden. You know, and I think that's a lot to do with, you know, how well the staff has done, so that's just something else to add to that.
Yes.
Telling the story. I'm done now. Anybody else?
So some of the other changes to the general fund include, like we just talked about, Orange County Fire Rescue. So as property values go up, the number of houses go up, our cost for fire rescue goes up. It'll be in about a third of the increase, um, in our property values, about three hundred eighty seven thousand increase to the fire rescue funding. It's about one point two million for next year. It includes funding for salary increases, uh, based on performance appraisal for staff, directors and the police department as well as a five hundred dollar bonus for town staff. Uh, in lieu of that, with the police department, we are increasing the retirement contribution, uh, from twelve percent to fourteen percent. Trying to catch up with with some of the other jurisdictions as far as the retirement contribution. Um, we do have one new sworn officer position in there and we did delete the town planner and the director of planning, the assistant town planner and director. Consultant, uh, for planning services. Brad's been doing a great job, uh, as far as that goes. Um, and also we, uh, did increase the budget for our events, we've got Santa's Lane, Oakland Heritage Day, Celebration Among the Oaks, uh, Oaks, excuse me. Um, and, um, we, uh, are also going to continue the enhanced lighting that we're doing in the town center, um, for the holidays.
That's so.
Financing and you got an update on the, on the HVAC from Pam, uh, but there's still about one point one million dollars left in that project budget that will happen next summer when we get the rest of the equipment installed, so that is included in the budget. Uh, we also have an eighty five thousand dollar, just closed out the twenty five thousand dollar grant last week for the, um, the management report that we got. Um, we've got an additional eighty five thousand that's coming during the the current budget. We're waiting on that contract, but we'll be working through that grant for the, the, um, for African American Center. And then we've got some additional funding in there for marketing and branding. I have not included anything for the water tower yet or the street signs, but we are working on getting some costs and getting some of that fine tuned so that we can move forward with those at some point in the near future. Um, but, um, it's not in the budget yet, I don't have any information on that, but we, we will make some accommodations for that in the future once we get more information, we are working on some of the other things right now, parts, you know, templates and signage and stationery. We're getting ready to order business cards, we're gonna be doing this incrementally, but we are moving forward with with getting the new branding out. Uh, and you'll see something on the agenda tonight, um, as far as taking that to the next step with an ordinance for the. Um, move into the utility fund budget, we have a five and a half million dollar utility budget. We have about sixteen hundred for customers, the utilities, wastewater revenues have been freeze, I think we're up to seven hundred. Res, or seven hundred accounts with wastewater and we've got, um, and that's within our accounts. We've also got a number of member in Oakland Park that are serviced by, uh, Winter Garden, so we've got quite a few of our residents on wastewater now. Again, same thing, four percent salary increase for staff, five hundred dollar bonus and a reserves in the, uh, utility fund are just under one point three million dollars. Uh, it includes funding for some grant projects, including the listation sticks that should be under construction, actually already got started and listation seven, which is part of the Jefferson Street Extension. Um, we've got some, uh, two American Rescue Plan projects, which include the alternative water plan projects. We are, but it does include four thousand dollars for the SRI loan that we are moving forward with for, uh, the design of that, uh, alternative water project as well as redundant well project. See quite a bit of work going on right out here and, uh, the well that's going in. Uh, and then also we've got the, uh, a project funded to do the connection, the way to the connection for the public safety and, uh, the school. Uh, go abandon the, uh, the dream field, that model property. So that's, uh, the utility fund, again, as, as the mayor indicated, we just found out on Friday that we are in line for a three hundred thousand dollar grant. It's for a water block project to, uh, enhance, um, some redundancy and to be able to properly serve public safety needs with, um, hydrants and, you know, fire flow. So we've got three hundred thousand dollar net, that's also tied to, uh, some development on Highway fifty. Um, but it will give us some redundancy and some, uh, some things, uh, in tying a, uh, creating a new loop that includes John's Landing. So, uh, that is something that we will put into the budget at some point, once we start getting that the paperwork and everything, but that just came to fruition on, on. Next thing, uh, talked about is impact fees, so what we have is, uh, we've been collecting impact fees for a number of years and Mike goes through an analysis every year of looking at what we got the previous year, what we spent this year, what we brought in this year, what we think we're gonna bring in next year. So there's a lot of numbers that go into these, some of the projects get done, some of them are rolled over, you know, a few of them that have rolled over. Um, but right now with the water system, there's a, a, a balance of just under one point two million dollars. Projects that we have in there is that water system bypass project, which the three hundred thousand is going towards that. We've got some of our own money and then, uh, we've got, uh, two hundred thousand in the budget and then three hundred thousand we'll put in for the water system bypass. We've got the alternative water design, we've got some money in this and then the four hundred thousand dollars beginning from the S for fun. These are just impact fees that I'm showing you here, so some of these projects can be funded from multiple, just the impact fee is part of that. Um, and we've got reserve, future projects have about seven hundred and twenty nine thousand and you'll see when they go through the water plan, you know, our, our long term. That's where our goal eventually be into the, the projects that, you know, for the future, so these are reserved for future projects. Wastewater system's the same thing, we, right now, the only thing we've got on the books is with the development of Longleaf and, uh, the avenues. Um, there's a balance that's supposed to go back, uh, at some point with the developer, for the developer agreement. There are some other extenuating circumstances, so this money's just sitting in the books. We, we do have about two hundred and twelve thousand, uh, two eleven nine seventy four for future projects on wastewater. Um, and we have, we are in the process of closing out our subject to sewer projects, so none of those dollars are in showing for next year because that one is, that one point two million dollars is being closed out. Parks and Recreation, we have a, uh, phase three, uh, on the books for, um, Spear Park. We've got the Pavilion, which we're working on. Um, we've got the Butterfly Garden, uh, which is something that may be coming up soon. We've got some talks with Women Grove and we might have some opportunities for a Butterfly Garden down there. And then we still have the Junior Port that's to be done. Um, and then with Sadler Trail Park, we've got the trail, playground, exercise stations and dog park, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. That's been going a little slower than than we expected, but we have done a little bit of work out there with the fencing that, um, is the buffer for, uh, the commercial area there on Sadler and the, um, uh, trees that we planted all on there. And some beautiful cedar trees so that we can then take out the burn, so we're not impacting the residents there and then be able to do that trickle there. So that is still moving forward and still one of the projects. I've got people that can't wait for us to do a dog park, so it is something we've got on the, on the radar. Um, and then we've got some reserves for future projects. Um, I know there's been some discussion as far as shade sales, I have not included that in the budget. Um, I think we probably need to have some, uh, some additional discussion on that in the next couple of months, talk about that before we do anything else out there at Spear Park. Um, law enforcement, we've got some money in there, we always, we've got new personnel coming on, so there are some things that we can spend as part of adding capacity to the, uh, to the, um, Police Department, so I've left that kind of generic, but we can, some of the equipment that we need to purchase for this new position that we are, that's included in the budget can come out of the, uh, some of the, what we previously cut the money on was increasing the capacity within the building, uh, for additional staff. But that project's finishing up, there are some additional things, if we get a new chief on, that will probably be open up. But I've got opportunity to be able to discuss that with a, a new chief. So, Parks and Recreation, more transportation is the big, the, the, the majority of the funding's at. Um, we have about two and a half million dollars in the budget. This doesn't take into account the money that we may be getting back from the, the roundabout project once that is completed. We did have to put up a million dollars in that project, um, to cover any change orders and and, uh, the CEI for the project. But we did leave some money in there for the roundabout and for the post-design services, uh, with CPH. Um, we've also, you know, once we get through with the project, there's some additional things that really should have been in the project that we need to take care of, including some landscaping. So that's why there's some money in there, we've got some money in there for some, uh, continued development of these turnouts that we've done. We just did the one on Paul and Tub Street, um, they've done a lot to help with, you know, managing the dirt roads and the transition to the asphalt, so having those turnouts have.
They're nice.
Made a big difference, you know, with maintenance of the roads. Um, I've got some money in there with Riley Farm, when we do, we've got, putting up some money, um, when we do that. Um, I've got some money in there with Riley Farm when we do, we've got putting up some money, um, when we do that intersection injection. Um, and Oakland Avenue to be able to do something that's uh in line with the visioning that we did uh for the complete streets. So that's, we've got some money to tie in with the developer money in order to to make sure that that uh moves forward. Uh, we had a couple come in with that live on Sadler Avenue near Pollard Park, one little section that's kind of isolated. It's one of the only dirt streets among all the paved streets on on in that area. Um, so the idea is to to pave that one little section to make it, all the other ones got repaved as part of the subject to sewer and that one. It's not because it wasn't. And then uh the money, the contract's already been awarded for the Stark Street construction. It came in significantly higher than what we had expected, so I've got the money in there for that. That that contract has been approved. Um, it kind of rolls from this year into next year. And then we've got the reserve for future projects, as I've stated before, once we get the roundabout done, I think we need to have some workshops with the commission. And develop a C I P plan for transportation of how these monies get spent. In accordance with some of the work that we've already done with uh the visioning and the complete streets. If the sales tax gets approved, it gives us another funding source that we can tie in. Talk about some real, some real projects, so um. Just just putting that out there, but that I think I see that as the next spring, next summer, having some workshops and really talking about some transportation. Um, projects that that can move forward.
That's what I was gonna ask, we probably answered it in the past, but if that does pass the transportation tax. How how soon would that be?
We'd be start collect the money January first.
And we have a short term and a long term list.
Right.
Uh administratively, um, we've got, um, I've got some money in there in case we want to move forward with the study. It's not really on the radar at this point. There may be some opportunities to spend some of this administrative money coming in the near future. I'll have that if it starts succeeding and we can, I can have the the commission allocate out of the reserves. Um, and then we've got our protection. We've continued to try to do some hydrant upgrades and you try to do that in here where it makes sense and where it's needed. So the total uh. Impact fee budget is five million four hundred fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars with projects in. About one point nine million dollar projects. Significant money in reserve for your projects. We'll get into uh the Oakland African Charter School and I'll try to step this up a little bit so we can get done uh.
My fault.
Oakland Avenue budget is six point six million. Reserves are estimated four hundred and eighty one thousand. And we've got salary raises for teachers three percent, but we've included a five hundred dollar bonus from what you. Uh, for the charter pool. I've kind of abbreviated the 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 larger presentation that you saw back in June. Um, these are some of the projects that have already actually taken place. Again, their their budget starts to align around. The costume painting, technology purposes, and you saw a great presentation from Jonathan and Amanda as far as where they're trying to go with technologies. Uh, they are working on a cover for one of their playgrounds, um, and then we've got um. One position that was reclassed from an instructional position to a uh full-time behavior tech support role. And then the big thing that that's happened over the next two years is we've got, they're calling S R three funding. Uh, it's about one point four million dollars. So what's what's in this budget is allocating. About eight hundred and seventy three thousand of that S R three funding for. The twenty twenty two, twenty three school year and that includes five part-time teacher age, which I believe we've got four of them that have been filled. Um, and then the following year, we'll have another four hundred and eighty six thousand to allocate in that next year. And again, the funds are designed to help schools safely reopen, restore and maintain high quality learning environments. Measure and effectively address learning loss and take other actions to mitigate the impacts of COVID nineteen. So, you know, Pam and the people are doing a yeoman's job and trying to get the uh the kids caught up from from. Um, lost learning uh as part of COVID nineteen. So. This uh brings you to the next recommended action. Um, we've got a total tentative budget in the amount of twenty eight million. Seventy nine thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars. You can see the breakdown of the four budgets that we have. Um, and so the recommended action is approval of the tentative budget uh for the town.
Okay, do we have any questions at the table? Um, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the tentative budget for uh year twenty twenty two dash twenty three.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Um, I need to open this to the public, but the public is really not the public, but we'll take any comments. All right, take back the table. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the the last approval is just again, we've you've already approved this one, but I again, I was like trying to get it on the record.
Yeah.
If anyone's interested, it's approved the final budget public hearing for the town of Oakland. It'll be here at the town meeting hall, two twenty one North Arrington. Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty two at six thirty P M. And just a reminder, we had this meeting night because.
Right.
O C P S has their public hearing tomorrow night and we can't conflict with them. So that's part of the term and part of these state statutes, so.
And it's been on the calendar. It's.
Yes, ma'am. Publicly approved.
And we've been doing it three years.
Yep.
Yep.
And and actually, every every property owner in town was mailed their term notices.
Yep. Well, that's a good. All right, so we need to approve the final budget hearing date of September twenty seven at six thirty.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the final budget hearing date of September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two at six thirty P M.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments at the table? Any questions or comments from the foe public? Take it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I know we've run a few minutes over.
Or we. Uh. Clear out, I would like to say this, that we we brought it up last time for uh the school. Staff and we brought it up for the um, the P T O staff that I think would probably be. Beneficial for us somehow or another taking us in front of the 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 staff for town, not just directors, directors here from us. You know, on on a basis, you know, on on what a great job you guys all do and you do, it's just been phenomenal, but gone through what we've gone through the last two and a half years and jobs done. It would be nice, I think, for the rest of the staff to hear that from us, maybe a luncheon or something that we could get in front of and thank everybody for.
I'm good with that.
But.
Not the like.
Long as we don't talk about masking, I'll be fine.
Yes. What we can talk about, none ever.
No, we don't want to talk about.
Please, please don't.
You know, just to kind of. Thank you. Stretch your legs, do whatever you want.
Uh, I'll stretch it this way. Well, this one. Hi, Jack, it's too long for your man.
Okay, I'd like to call the September twelfth meeting to order, scheduled for seven, actually starting around seven fifty. So, pre-stamp of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the.
Everybody in the audience, bow your head. Father God, thank you for entrusting us once again with our town, with your town. And I ask that uh you give us your wisdom and discernment and you help us make decisions tonight, this evening, for the best of our citizens. May we honor you and always say this evening, in your name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Vocal.
Commissioner McCallan.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Bishop Ramos.
Present.
Mr. Sadowill.
Present.
Mayor Start.
Here.
We are up here. Awesome. Um, presentations constitutional week proclamation. Have it right here. Constitution Week two thousand and twenty two, whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty two. March the two hundred and thirty fifth anniversary of drafting of the Constitution. Of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting improper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document. And its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas the public law nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States. Designating September seventeenth through the twenty third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Kathy Stark, Mayor of Oakland, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through the twenty third as Constitution Week in the town of Oakland.
Very cool.
Yes. Very cool. And so is that one hundred years even? Yeah, from us to them. That's pretty cool. Okay. All right, um, we have a public forum, which if there's anybody who wants to talk, I'm going to be very surprised. So, um, I'm going to move to the next item, if that's okay. Um, we have a big consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda? All right, I need a motion.
The accepted consent agenda is presented.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinances. Um, first public hearing ordinance two thousand twenty two dash nineteen.
This is the first public hearing ordinance, number twenty twenty two dash nineteen, an ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting new official municipal logos. Creating a new section two point two town logos in Article one, chapter two of the Town of Oakland Code of Ordinances. Governing the use of the municipal logos and penalizing the unauthorized use thereof. Providing for use of municipal logos by third parties where authorized by the town and providing for codification conflicts, severability and an effective date.
Thank you.
So, you know, the commission have already had already approved the logo. This takes that next step and puts it in the code deposit. Gives us control over um the town's logo, or gives the commission control over the town's logo, so um. Simply, you know, simply put, it gives us the ability to to govern our our logo.
Okay, um, do we have any questions or comments at the table? I love it. So, um, I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash nineteen.
Okay, I'll open a public hearing.
Oh, second.
Oh, thank you. Now I'm trying to move right on.
Trying to go home.
My mind now. Okay, thank you for the second. Any questions or comments from the audience? I'll close the public hearing, take it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first public hearing ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty.
Public hearing for the next twenty twenty two dash twenty, an ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, revising chapter fourteen. Buildings and building regulation of the town's code of ordinances providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
And Jack, I take it you are presenting?
I am.
Okay, well, let's see how you do.
I don't know how he does, he kind of looks like the new pastor or something.
In the description.
The short description of this is we're working on the car of hardwood pride. Uh, we have provided you with uh a first draft, you might say, and we've been working on it since then. Uh, to make some changes to get it up to date. We're facing some deadlines by the end of September to have new contractors online. It may be the same as existing contractors, but still a legal process to go through by the end of September. And so to be able to have those contracts, we have to have a B schedule. Uh, that applies to their work and in order to have that fee schedule set up exactly right, we need a new ordinance. And ordinance requires two readings, so because of that, yeah, I started on this, might say a little earlier than I might prefer in terms of the degree of finish. Uh, attorneys are still reviewing it. They looked at it the first time. We spent a lot of time going through. We're working with Orange County. Uh, expect to get the fire department responses tomorrow and so a lot of coordination relative to the fees and things. Now that you have approved on the consent agenda, the ranking of the respondents. For doing the building permitting inspection, I can talk to them about trying to set up uh the contract terms. Uh, they're going to have to be much more precise than what they have been in the past because there've been a lot of changes to the Florida Building Code and Florida statutes. There are a lot of things that the town has to do. And there are a lot of things that if we fail to do them in a timely manner, we have to give money back. And so we have to have provision in the contract that says. If they don't report, then we wind up having to refund some money. We're getting a discount of what they're charging us plus a penalty for failing to report. So there are those kinds of terms in there. We also have to negotiate some changes to the websites. Uh, that they operate because there's a a requirement for certain things to be there. That are currently provided on the website, which is sort of an out of date version, and we're also moving towards all digital. And so there's a lot of language we try to put in there to be able to accept digital signatures and to be able to work with that. So. A lot of the the things that are evolving here, one one of the things that didn't change was about address numbers. I left. Then it said two and a half inch numbers. Well, the fire department told us today that there's a local amendment that requires those to be six inches high.
What? What is that?
Uh, that's the fire protection code. Uh, that's overwritten the Florida Building Code. Uh, they want to be able to see the numbers from the street.
Thanks, Anchen.
Six inches and some places are going to eight inches on signs and things of that type of minimum. Uh, we also had to add a fire prevention article, uh, that's new from the one that. Received initially with your agenda package, uh, that is to for us to be able to enforce those types of elements. Uh, a county attorney is reviewing it to see whether or not we need to include some E S, E M S elements to that part of it. In a local agreement for larger semesters. We also uh deleted uh some content in there that. We realized was left over from when the, before there was a Florida Building Code. The town had its own building code and it has a standard housing code and all the things you have to have in there. Uh, and I had thought there was uh an enforcement issue someplace else, like in Okoye. Code enforcement does minimum housing inspections, whatever you change, they count on a water meter. So when when a new renter comes in, uh, they go in and they inspect the houses. By the time that you don't really do that, don't have that, so we're going to strike on that because it conflicts with the Florida Building Code. Uh, so it's a lot of things like that that we've been been going through. It's a lot of technical detail stuff that we've had to make sure it's consistent with. Florida Building Code, the Florida statutes. With the way Orange County sets up their pieces because we contract out the fire protection. Uh, as well as making sure we know all the things we have to include in the contract when we provide. There's also some interaction with the planning people because when you turn in a permit, one of the first things you have to do is. Check the setbacks. As a town planner requirement, not a building person requirement, so that there's some coordination there to be able to. Move that around and then to get it to Orange County for them to look at the fire piece and those types of things uh that we'll put in there. Uh, so we're getting all that uh settled up uh this week. Uh, we're also starting negotiating those contracts uh with the with the providers. Uh, so the next time we will initially adopt the ordinance. Then that ordinance authorizes you to adopt resolutions setting the fees. And then once we have those fees, we'll be able to sign contracts with the providers. Who will collect that money or tell us how much we need to collect and pay them uh that amount of money that they're owed for their services. We're trying to be comprehensive, but at the same time simplify so that when people come in, they know exactly what they. Need to do in order to get a permit. And we're kind of trying to do this a little bit by remote control because we won't have any staff working on it. Uh, and so that means we have to really button up uh the workflow, you might say, in the contracts to make sure it gets done.
God bless you for that.
Sounds like a lot of cleanup.
We've also had to devote an addressing manual. Uh, we've had. Digital document management manual in terms of. Digital document management manual in terms of how to accept and check digital signatures. There's a lot of different components that go in this besides the ordinance that implements it. That will be approved by the town manager. We can follow those rules and regulations based on the authority that's given in the ordinance.
So more to come. Okay.
A lot more to go.
Yeah, that that, you know, and you just, we just need the highlights. We need to know. If we're going to enforce something that's new, like a six inch number, how that's going to work. But, you know, the rest of it, you telling us you're buttoning up these contracts, contracts are there if anybody wants to read them, we're good. Okay.
Ties it back into the amount of work the staff's doing. Good example on assistant manager.
Yes.
His duties.
Yes, thank you. And.
Yeah, what's he gonna do next week?
But this also. For what Sal is saying, this goes back to what I was saying is, you know, we're coming off a period of of extreme growth. And these are the kind of things that we need to focus on. Make sure that, you know, we're not leaving ourselves exposed to, you know, losing money or doing, you know. I mean, like when I moved here, that. It was like I went to go get my address at the old town hall. And they argued over whether my address was right or wrong for a half an hour before they gave me an address. And I still, I was like, are you sure? And they never, you know, told me there was an alley on my property that I had to abandon. I mean, it was a rather interesting time. So we have come a long way, but now's time to polish it, really polish it up.
You know what the argument was on mine? Next time, whether my house, whether I'm Riley Street or Daniel Street.
And it was just, they just, it was whoever decided, you know, whether right or wrong, that was the way it got decided. So we've come a long way.
Yeah, a little bit further.
Yeah, well, I want that. I mean, that's what I want is I want. We have been working, I've been in office since ninety-four, Mike's been right behind me. Everybody here has tenure and we have been working towards this for years. And it's a process and I think we've done just an amazing job. Staff, the town, you know, just an amazing job.
When I started with the charter review. We had to turn that thing and thank thank God for our chief Thomas.
Yeah.
Part take Fred Shepard, Dennis, I mean, it was.
Warren.
Warren. We had to talk about what do you do if the horse goes into your backyard? And I mean, things like that. If the donkey gets loose down open avenue.
Yeah, from night from eighteen.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yes.
From the eighteen hundreds.
We were just spitting on the sidewalk.
And then we had a really big. I can't remember this exact to do, but there were two different charters, two different copies. One said, was it the town manager, three charters? And the town manager must live in Oakland. The town manager does not have to live in Oakland. I mean, stuff like that, that's really critical.
Three years.
Yeah, you guys, Mike Braden was on that, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. I don't think it's possible, but.
Friends.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, incoming attractions, we're working also on a special event chapter. And it may require us to talk about horses, if people are bringing horses.
Okay.
Talk about reindeer.
Yep. All right, so I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion except first public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions or comments at the table? Okay. I'll open a public hearing. Any comments? Close the public hearing. All in favor?
All right.
All right, so now we have the ten year water supply facility work. I cannot wait.
Going to take them ten years to spin this out now?
No, just five.
Yeah, five minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah. Mayor Commission, good evening. CPH and I are here tonight to. Town's ten year water supply facility work plan. I'll be somewhat brief and we'll paraphrase the cover memo on the agenda. So if you read that, you kind of have an idea what I'm talking about. The Water Management District requires public utility such as ours to adopt water supply facility work plan. In eighteen months of the governing board approval of the twenty twenty Central Florida Water Initiative Regional Water Supply Plan. That's a lot said. But we had eighteen months to get that together. Eighteen months ago, that's a good answer. So you're adopting it right on. The the last plan that we did, we were about a year and a half late doing that. It was kind of a a new to us. So anyway. This plan contains an assessment of projected water demands and potential sources of water to meet regional demands through twenty forty. The town last adopted a water supply facility work plan twenty eighteen. Effectively, every five years, we'll be doing a ten year projection and updates, if that makes sense. The town's updated plan must address several specific areas. These are all things you've heard before. A five year capital plan, alternative water for irrigation needs, conservation measures, comp plan amendments, the list goes on. To meet this requirement, staff and conjunctions, the H should develop a comprehensive and far reaching water supply strategy that includes items. Due to the large size of the report, I've only submitted the summary and strategies section. The full one hundred and three page document is is on display.
Can't wait.
Office. So with that, I'll turn it over to the CPH. Presentation and any questions on the matter, we can answer them for you. Feel free to interrupt at any time.
Mike. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Robbie Gonzalez. I'm with CPH Corporation. I was the the project manager and engineer of record. For putting this water supply plan for together for the town of Oakland. We also have Scott Breitenstein right back here. So he's my principal in charge. So he keeps me in line and keeps, you know, make, he'll he'll cue me what I'm doing and see what what's happening here. So basically what I'm going to do is I'm going to, it's fifteen slides that we have right here. I believe the report itself was really forty pages and then the other hundred and some odd pages is all the appendix stuff. You really want to get in into that juicy stuff at the back backend.
I know, thank you.
Okay. So I'll try to run through those parts. So I'm going to be presenting a ten year water supply facility work plan. This running from twenty twenty-two to twenty thirty-two is a planning period. So your first slide right here, it's a presentation outline. So we got eleven slides that I'll be running through. You know, the goals, purpose, you know, the obligation. So as I'll run through them and follow those out. So as Mike pointed out, the first goal, so in accord to a state law, the town is required to adopt the ten year water supply facility work plan into your current. Comprehensive development plan every five years. What you want to do is at that time is is the next slide. Is the purpose is we're going to be strengthening the balance between coordination of your comprehensive development plan and with. With the regional water supply planning. So what you're looking at is what is your existing and future land use planning? How can you provide that sustainable growth and essential infrastructure? And you're also looking at on a regional standpoint, well, seeing if there's anything that they could provide you as well. But what's the review of your obligations? First, you need to establish what your water service areas. Want to maintain your inner interlocal agreements, which you have four right now. I believe three of them are with water, which is Orange County, Winter Garden, and Montbird. And then I think Claremont and Winter Garden are both wastewater right there. You also want to evaluate your comprehensive, your consumptive use permit requirements for water supply. And your infrastructure that you use to supply for each store and issue that. And you also need to participate. And if there's if there's any mandates to identify any alternative water supply sources that you have available. Or if there's any regional water supply projects that you would become a partner in. And then the last thing is you want to update your comprehensive planning, whether it's twelve, six, any legislative requirements in your. Requirements with regards to central portal watering. Because that's the area that you tend to be. Yeah. So what were the necessary tasks? So we did these seven tasks right here. If you look at the report, I believe those are each of the chapters that we have in there. Is you're going to coordinate with the Water Management District, you know, first, they're going to, I'll show you a slide here where they project where your population and where your. The water supply is and you, you know, go back and forth a little bit with them. Coordinating what your true needs are and and what you can do to to get to your us. To your, to meet your water supply needs. You also coordinate with other suppliers, which you actively do right now. You you want to define what's the extent of the responsibility that you put forward for your water service. Then one big chapter that you'll see in here is that's when we start evaluating the capacity of your existing water supply facilities to meet the the future needs. So, you know, we want to develop whether the population, what's the water demand projections? What are the service areas that we define? You look at the inventory that you have available to see, can you meet those those demands? And then you identify what are your future needs? From that, you also look a little bit at your conservation measures. You you have a active conservation plan and that's also in your in your comprehensive development plan. So I believe we did that back in twenty twenty when we updated your comprehensive development plan. And we recommend, we recommend a five year CIP plan, program plan for you all to. And go forward and you periodically want to review the goals and objectives and policies that's necessary in your in your current comprehensive development plan. So here's your plan development that you have coming on. As you'll see in yellow, the orange right there is those items are what's under construction. You got about four hundred equivalent revenue. Equivalent residential units coming into those yellow areas that you see. There's five developments there. Under review, you got another four developments coming in. I think the biggest one is the Ridley Farms right there up in the middle in that in that dark blue. And then you have four conceptual or one hundred and thirty-seven ERUs. Plus you, we also include a little bit of infill, usually about ten percent or so. And so your total ERUs that you have is about eleven twenty-two that we project that you would see in the next. I believe I did, this was a twenty year projection, what I was doing here. Okay. If you go to the next slide right here, so here's your population projection. On the. On the left, okay? So you'll see there's the green line right there. That's what the Central Portal Water Initiative. Regional Water Supply Planning, that's what the population's going to be. But they're starting you out at around about just under four thousand and saying that you're going to flatline at six thousand. What we're seeing with this growth that you would have with the all these developments is you're right at four thousand right now in twenty twenty. And it looks like you're going to about double it, you know, just over eight thousand is what you're going to go to in the next twenty years. What does that look like in water supply? You could see the the slide next to it, you'll see the red line right there. That is what your consumptive use permit limit is right there, which is it's less than one right there. It's a what, a point eight?
Point eight three.
Eight three, point eight three is where the where you're at right now. And you see you're you're at a point six right now. So you got two hundred thousand gallons. You know, before you start creeping into that, I believe your permit goes to twenty, I mean, to. Thirty-four.
Yeah, it's a twenty year permit.
Yeah, we got your permit. So it doesn't look like you're going to need that permit unless you 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 do something out there. So what do we see on the next slide? This is your historical type of use allocation that we have in a pie chart. You'll see the biggest slice that you have right there in that darker blue, that's a residential irrigation. And that's about half, half your use right there is is that amount right there. So that's what we're we're really addressing right now is since it's the largest demand, that's the project that we're looking at is the whole island. Stormwater harvesting, alternative water supply. That's the purpose is to cut that slice right there and try to get some water, capture it before it goes into Lake Apaka. Move the hot phosphorus, you know, that 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 the phosphorus loads that typically go in there. Get some benefits like that, push for grant money and any kind of funding that you can. So that's the biggest chunk right there that we're going after. So what does that look like?
Can I can I interrupt? So with. What would that, going back to previous page, what would that make that line look like? Would that get us down below that red line?
Oh, you're going to see that. You're going to see that.
Yes, almost. So what what's happening is you have, under the Central Portal Water Initiative settlement limits. They're going to limit your upper Florida offer withdrawal in twenty twenty-five. So what you see is I've drawn a line at twenty twenty-five, a solid line. So I propose that you raise your consumptive use permit to what you're going to project in twenty twenty-five, which is going to be like one point two. So we're talking about an additional four hundred thousand gallons right now. You know, we said we're at, we're at what, a point eight right now? And so we want to get it up to like a one point four. So we want to get that increase right there. Then, as you see the purple across there, that is, that is what we will be able to get out of the alternative water supply. So you'll see that it would actually, over these next years right here, it would get us down there.
Down.
Yes, sir. But you would still have to maintain some water out of the out of the wells to irrigate people as well. You know, unless we could find, unless we get more efficient or 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 better production out of the alternative water supply. You might be able to push that line down, but this is what we're seeing right now. So that's the impact. Okay. So one of the recommended improvements, you've got four major improvements. One is to construct phase one of the stormwater harvest. So that phase one is just the the with the the. Withdrawal facility and the treatment and then the pumping into the distribution system. And it doesn't include the reservoir and big storage or anything like that. The next item would be expanding your irrigation transmission mains to to long leave Oakland Trails, the avenues of Ridley Farms by twenty twenty-nine. We also want to upsize water distribution mains that are in the in the in the. That are portable water distribution lines within your distribution system right now, just to get to to meet fire flow demands and peak hour demands. Keep your pressure up. And you also want to continue expanding your central sanitary sewer water collections. And your additional, which are the minor kind of recommendations are, of course, like I said, let's look at modifying the cup. Let's, you know, develop and update wastewater and alternative water master plans to prioritize these sanitary sewer and alternative water supply. Upgrades right there. You want to look at rerating your pulp with water system capacity. To us, you know, get it up by three MG, up to three MGD on your on the water plant. And also conduct a rate study and impact fee evaluation, assess how you're going to manage. Because you're looking at a budget of about two and a half million a year. And I know we just saw through the second level. One point two, I think, for this next previous year.
You know what would happen to us if.
Oh, yes.
It would be worse than.
Oh, yes.
Other things that are going on right now.
Yes, this is true.
So that would be something that we would want to.
Oh, yes, true. You want to really get it to impact these developers. So you'll see on the next slide, so the recommended CIP, you're looking at about fifteen million dollars. The total water system right now. Half of that that we have in there, that's actually is an earmark for if the well, when we when we test the well over here. There's like two point six million that we have earmarked in there. If we don't have hydrant sulfide in that well, we don't have that part. So that amount goes down. But pretty much we're looking at about, you know, it'd really be provided by the developers and impact fees. The wastewater improvements, you're looking at one point five. And you already have seven fifty that's already provided by grant funding right now. And then the alternative water system, that's the big chunk right there. And like I said, you got phase one and phase two, though that's the big part of that. That's a six point five million that that we're seeing right there. And that's to be paid by grants, developers and impact fees. And if you can also get any type of state appropriation money, things of that. And that's to be paid by grants, developers and impact fees, and if you can also get any type of state appropriation money, things of that nature.
Yes, yes, sir.
The updated twenty twenty uh, comprehensive development plan that, that, that just got the grants. It's the one in December, was that November, November last year? It, yeah, so it all got approved, so these, these were policies. Items right here were all updated in that comp plan, and now you have the ability to adopt the water supply plan by reference into the comprehensive. So what's the bottom line? Prepare the, the ten-year water supply plan. For reference in, into the central portal water initiative plan, develop, planning effort. And also to uh, adopt it into your comprehensive. There's level those capital improvements that are primarily determined by current, by current and projected uh, growth within the city. And there is the funding. Outlying in the plan could be a combination of impact fees, developer companies, utility reserves, or F and various grant funds. With a recommendation, we got two recommendations for y'all. The town. Is uh, that you adopt the water supply facility work plan into the twenty twenty comprehensive development plan by reference. And then you direct staff to continue implementation of the recommended capital improvement program plan as necessary. At that.
Okay, um, I was just thinking. Um, at the table, and I have one quick question.
Well, that's the total cost of everything, eight point nine, one point five and four point six.
Yes, sir. It's, it'll be there, the uh, C I P table in the report.
Okay.
That I have, that breaks down all the projects. I think it's table.
So we doing all of this without impacting our residents, right?
So far, well, potentially.
That's the idea.
All of the.
As needed or as.
Where is that again? Don't worry about it, but that's those, those are numbers, right? No, 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 don't worry about it. Those are numbers, right? But again, it's another story, we gotta tell, and that's all.
Well.
It's just, it's just amazing the stuff that this town does.
Um, and my.
What we doing here?
When we tell the story, I want to talk about all the money that we've gone and found. Parker strikes, you know, every time we turn around. Um, Steve and I and Joseph and others have got, go to Florida to the state every year. We've come back with, what, what do we have now? How much? Three million? I know, me too.
Close to four million dollars.
No, okay, so uh, question is on slide eleven also. You have wastewater system improvements, one million five hundred and ten. Seven hundred and fifty-four is already provided by grant funding, okay? So does that not include state of Florida funding? Cause what we're getting are line items in the Florida budget. It's not a grant per se, correct? We call it, is that what we're calling a grant?
Is that the same money? That's what she's asking.
Yeah, that's, that's the money, it's the. Appropriation slash grant money, yeah.
So.
State money.
Wastewater improvement, one million five hundred and ten, we've got far more than that in wastewater.
These are future improvements.
Future, okay, that's what I needed to know. It, it's sometimes I, this stuff. So what we continue to lobby the state for will help here.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
That, that's why the, the two million dollars that were vetoed, it's. Right here.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, th- th- this is the, the plan moving forward of things that we need to do. Um, so yeah, this, that's what.
So we're going, I guess, you know, what, what is it, Mr. Smith goes to Washington? We're going to, we're going to Tallahassee this year. It's March, right, this year?
We need to go to DC too.
Pardon?
So we need to go to DC because, well, we got some money from DC, I know.
Should we be going, should we going to DC with the Florida League?
We don't have to.
Okay, well.
All the elections pan out, yeah, we need to.
So let's.
Put an N L C, the National League, we could go during that time.
Yeah, when they have that conference, remember? But then the Marriott went bankrupt, where'd they move to?
This helps us identify those projects and then start figuring out, you start asking.
All right, but those two are definitely things we need to talk about once the elections are over.
Well, I think, I think Webster's already locked in, right?
Locked in.
Start talking to Webster now. I mean, there's no reason we can't talk to Webster right now.
Well, he's successful, so.
Yeah.
That. But you know, we are the masters of finding funding. And that keeps our residents from being impacted. So this is a good.
Being safe because of the. Legal style.
We are gonna start pitching to the choir. So, thank you very much. You guys have questions? I'm sorry.
Just a comment, uh, slide number eight.
The one with the draft?
It showed that next year, yeah, we're already passive, but. Yeah, basically what we're doing is, is we're front loading those four hundred units that are already under construction. Cause we don't know how fast they're gonna fill up.
Which four hundred units are those?
The uh, under construction, no, probably that's uh.
Probably is that.
That's a review.
Yeah, and those numbers may slow down with housing.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if you had a crystal ball, we'd all be rich.
But you know, bottom line, you go out twenty years and if all that gets developed, that's kind of where your numbers are. So where you start, where, you know, you got your.
We've been talking for a long, long time, about seven thousand was billed out. So eight sounds reasonable with some of the annexations we've done.
Kind of addresses that, when you modify. That you push it up and. We recommend modifying.
So that, that model on, on slide number ten is more likely to happen in the next year or two.
Yeah, so, so that model is probably what we need to be looking at between alternative water projects and then increasing our. Subuse permit. Um, those are the few things that we need to, you know, really focus on. So that we can stay within our.
Yeah, there's table uh, four one in the report that's got the C I P, if you want to see the actual. Numbered projects and all that we identified.
What year?
And what year and what funding source.
Well, we need to go get that money from. Somewhere, not from our citizens, but. Act fees, developers, Washington, Tallahassee, wherever it takes.
Come up with, I think we need to come up with a comprehensive plan eventually.
Yeah.
Of how we're gonna do this, at least our part of it.
And that's the purpose of this water supply, it's really work plan is to coordinate that with your comprehensive development plan. Make sure the planning and growth that they have is in concert with this. And then you adopt it by reference.
Yep. Well, you were talking about cola? Is that what I heard you say?
For uh, additional funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, we passed, it says the uh, alternative waters supply like that in our, this plan with uh, water management district.
Well, this is gonna be a lot of work, so I think we're all, we've got all began it to win it, so.
Yeah, there's some grant cycles coming up with, with E P and with uh, St. John's, so.
Yeah.
Keeping an eye on that for us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was eye-opening.
I don't know what year it was when I first came on the commission, that was one of our biggest issues, it was water storage. Well, we only had that one tower. And it was, it was.
No, 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 no. What, yeah, I, we could all tell you that we had a town engineer who couldn't estimate.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And we founded.
Right.
Found ourselves in a, a real pickle that we had to solve very quickly.
Exactly, yeah, that was one of the first headaches I remember when I first came.
Yep.
I'm not sure it was two year, two or three, but yeah.
Yeah, well, I.
And then it kind of went.
Exactly.
Yep.
I got, you know, six, that was it, two years, yeah, yeah.
But it got solved, so.
But I'm saying that, but it, it show, it tells the story that we've been doing this water stuff for a long time and we fix it, but we, it's a. It's an ongoing.
Thought we were done, once we put that tank in, thought we were done to build out. I remember the meeting where I was just ou- outraged by this whole. Tell me you don't have water, I mean, really? And I asked if there were any questions from the audience and Scott goes, no, not after that. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, we went from four thousand to seven thousand to nine thousand.
Yeah.
Fifteen years.
But I'm like, how do you, how do you come to us and tell us, you know, I'm talking staff. How do you come to us and tell us, oops, we're out of water?
Yeah.
How, how does that happen?
Seemed to be pretty easy.
There was a paper that said it was miscalculated.
Did, did we get the funnel?
Yeah. Okay, so we gotta, okay, we, we're digressing all over the place.
Yeah.
All right, so you need a motion to continue to move forward? Is that what you want? So when it says direct staff, do you need to vote for that or we just say go for it?
We need you to adopt the plan and then just direct, and then you can direct us.
Okay.
I would say adopt the plan first and for the C D P five reference.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to adopt the water supply facilities work plan into the two thousand twenty comprehensive development plan by reference.
And second, and any questions or comments at the table? Okay, does the audience have anything to say? Moving it back to the table, all in favor? And then now we're supposed to buy. Incentives just to say, please move forward. Thank you. It's, I'm always happy to see C P H here.
Thanks.
Is Mike Parker's expect?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so uh, manager reports, staff reports, do we have anything?
First thing, I just want to remind everybody of our meet the artists on Thursday night, five to seven for Hispanic Heritage Month. Got quite the, uh, we got uh, live music, uh, street food, uh, food truck. And treats from Westmore Creamery, so excited about the event. The thing is, I uh, was invited to Oakland Presbyterian Church on Sunday. They had their hundred and thirty fifth anniversary. As a church here in Oakland. Um, I appreciated the uh, the invite and I had a great time at that Thursday afternoon and a nice potluck lunch, so.
We had good potluck.
Really enjoyed that. There's a couple other things coming up and I'm sure commissioners that want to speak to those. The, uh, one other thing is uh, the bridge, I know the mayor had a question about the uh, the road bridge over uh, the turnpike.
I got a question.
Um, we do not have a date as to when they're gonna open that up yet. I did send something to the P I O and Mike's always in conversation with the turnpike authority. But we do not know when they're gonna open it up for traffic at this point. They had a few um, issues um. With site conditions that they're trying to make sure that they've got taken care of before they open up the bridge. So um, uh, wish I had more, more news about that, but the pedestrian bridge is, is gone and they're using the road bridge for pedestrians at this point, so. That's uh, that's all I've got.
Okay, so um, Sal, do you have anything?
We had a reading about the um, La Florida celebrating for the Hispanic Heritage this Thursday. And I, I believe that Elise said that they got the flamenco dancer coming, so that was not gonna happen and it happened, so I'm excited about that. I'll be there.
I'll be there. Correct?
I know Steve had it in his manager's report, but I just want to bring it up that uh, Nature Fest is September twenty-fourth. On Saturday from ten to three.
Sounds, are we gonna?
At night, we have the Ron Carter Jazz Concert right here.
Wow.
Yeah, so we're gonna have.
Or it happened in town.
Yeah, we're gonna have a food and wine here on the inside and live music outside, so looking forward to it. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, you see the bands around town.
I saw them putting them up, putting this one up today. Mike?
I'm good this time.
Um, the only thing I really have is, we have a lot, you know, we're, you know, you hear these discussions going on and staff. Is gonna have to figure out, you know, how they prioritize what they're gonna do for second, third, fourth. Um, but it is kind of resetting the stage for what's happening in town. And I think we're in a great place. So um, and we did have a good time at the Presbyterian's. Um, and the only other thing.
Just acknowledge.
That France, we've, we lost our Francine. And there are uh, you know, there are, it's a two day. Um, so if anybody wants to get involved and um, they're looking for someone from the town to speak on Tuesday. And I'm not available, so um, you know, it would be great. I know that Sal's planning on attending. So.
Be in North Carolina, so.
I'm traveling too, yeah.
Oh. Sal, are you?
Come back, I will come back.
Are you scared?
I'm scared of attending?
No, scared of speaking?
Yeah, I'll say something short.
Would be lovely, thank you. Um, we'll set you up for success, we'll get those resolutions out.
Still got the one in the car, I never gave it to him.
Okay, we got copies of that.
I could read, I could read them, yeah, yeah.
And that'll keep you out of trouble.
Yeah, I did, I did mention last time when I came in here Friday, that we, we lost two queens that day.
I know.
Yes.
We lost Queen of England and we lost the Queen of Oakland. On the same thing.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, that's the same way I looked at it too.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we sure did, yeah.
Um, oh, it was Elaine's thirty-fifth anniversary with the post office today. I don't know, I saw that on Facebook. I took her over a card, so.
And how many years she's been there? How many years?
Thirty-five.
Oh, no, I saw her today, I didn't know that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was on Facebook, so I.
Good stuff, it was on social media.
Yeah, I told her, I said, you broke the postal system on Thursday for the honor of your anniversary today. Gets all their, their communications in there.
He is great.
He is, yes, awesome. She's wonderful.
He has seen a bunch in there.
Yeah. We've had some interesting postmasters in our time. What was the one guy's name that you, if you want to know what was happening in Oakland?
Yeah.
All you had to do is walk in the door. Dean.
Dean.
All you had to do is walk in the door, oh, miss so-and-so isn't doing so well. That's the way he talks.
And you had the one that's.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And who's the one, oops, the lady that had the Star Trek wedding? It was really odd and she ended up married, leaving and her wedding was all Star Trek generated and everyone gave like this Klingons or something like that.
That wasn't um. No, what's the one at the school? Does pre- she does P K.
Now, this is a postmaster.
Oh, it was a postmaster? Oh, I have no idea. I don't know.
Well, current postmaster, I get notifications, you know, when you get mail and packages, so. It said it was coming in like on a Friday, but it came in on Thursday, I went in there and I had a, a package came in a day earlier and what y'all said it was gonna be. Postmaster immediately said, well, we can hold it another day for you.
Oh, but it was always funny, he was always.
I forgot. You know, he was the one that actually got it started on the zip code.
He was great. I was sorry to see him go. He and Elaine were quite fair. So, um.
All hearts and minds are satisfied, that's a journey. It is eight oh seven P M.
One real quick point, the, the town's gonna send flowers, I, I wanna do it off.
Would be great.
Are we off?
Yes.